I'm really curious, like, what's their end game?
I don't know, and then we were watching The Lincoln Lawyer.
Oh, love it.
But then they stopped the season.
It's gonna start up again in August.
Yeah, that was annoying, and they stopped it on a cliffhanger.
The season started in July, they had like five episodes, and then they're gonna have another four or five that they're gonna put out and on. Yeah, probably just should've waited till August to watch them all.
I know, it's so hard. Okay, well, I wrote it down, so I know Abby has good taste in movies and shows, so I'm sure it'll be good.
It's funny, I don't see who could dislike it.
The Dame Secretary was my... Yes, with Felicity, even though her hair is not Felicity's 90s hair.
All right, we'll be live in five, four, three, two, one. Call the regular meeting to order. Jennifer, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Ms. Avenger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Shu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Okay, we have a forum. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to ask me taking off the consent agenda? All right, hearing and seeing then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Maura, is there a second to the motion? Thank you, Stacy, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. DePaul Avenger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Becker Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Shu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, your motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comments, seen in public, I'll move to the next item. Just staff reports. Kate, we're gonna have a report on the Climate Action Plan Committee by Kelly and Jill, correct?
Yes, so we have Kelly Durov and Jill Franklin, who are our co-chairs of the Climate Action Committee. Of course, people know Kelly because she comes every month. I don't know if everyone's met Jill. Jill is one of our Adult Services Librarians, and she does a lot with our sustainability programming. I imagine you might hear about some of that today, so I'll turn it over to them.
Thanks for having us. As you all know, I'm Kelly, this is Jill Franklin.
Thank you for having me.
So Jill is a librarian in Adult Services and also one of the founding members of the Library's Green Team. She's been working at this for over a decade and has been a driving force in the Climate Action Plan Committee as we know it today. So Jill and I are co-chairs of the committee, and we're gonna give you a little update on what we've been up to for the last almost two years, because the last time we presented on climate action, it was in the auditorium during COVID. Jill did a wonderful presentation, and that was almost two years ago, so. First up, where are we now? So as I had mentioned, June 2021, we presented to the board and started talking about the Village having a climate action plan. The board signed on to the Village Climate Action Plan as an intergovernmental partner in September 2021, and in January 2022, we re-imagined our green team and renamed it the Climate Action Plan Committee. So our work in sustainability has been tied in very closely with the Village's climate action plan since that time. Some of the things we've been thinking about is the triple bottom line. So the triple bottom line you'll often hear in the corporate world as being people, profits, and planet. And ALA adopted in 2018 their own version of the triple bottom line, as well as adopting sustainability as a core tenet in library work. And so this is a great graphic that may not be very easy to see, but it is available on the ALA website. That sort of breaks down all the different ways that the library can contribute to enhancing the triple bottom line of a community. So things like having inclusionary spaces for all traditions and cultures. Staff and boards reflect the demographics of the community, reducing and reducing the use of products that go into a landfill and waste in general, reusing whenever possible, helping to promote food sovereignty, the list goes on and on. So these are all things that are being talked about at a national level in terms of librarianship and sustainability and things that we have definitely adopted in our climate action work here at the library. We also have a sustainability policy, I know this is hard to read, but just to kind of jar your memory, that's what it looks like, that was adopted in 2012, and it is a board policy. We have a facilities plan that was done in 2019 by BTC. Again, this might look familiar to some of you, you were involved in adopting it. Basically, that plan determines the general condition, age, and life expectancy of the facility, along with any long-term repair and replacement. One of the things that is great about this plan is that it looks at us existing in the space that we have, and anytime that you can adapt the space that you're in, rather than tear down and build new, there are great benefits to the environment. So the fact that we have a plan where we're looking at our facility and trying to keep things in good repair and up to date is really excellent. There's also opportunity for more sustainability in that, but where we are now, it's pretty good. You may remember the master plan. It was a plan that we adopted in 2017, product architecture and design, worked with the library to do a plan that was supposed to be about 10 years and tackle projects for renovating, bringing things up to date, making the facility as modern and accessible as possible. Adjustments were made to the plan in 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic, and it was paused in 2022 due to shifting needs as a result of the pandemic. So goals for future growth that we're gonna talk about later in this presentation are something that will definitely affect where we go with the master plan in the future, and there's a lot of opportunity for making sustainable decisions in that. The Climate Action Plan itself has eight sectors, those are listed up on the slide. It targets a 35% reduction of community-wide greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and an 80% reduction by 2050. So this is the plan that the Village has adopted. They have done one annual assessment last fall, so I'm anticipating another one coming soon. We'll be able to share that information with all of you, as will the Village. The library has, committee has really looked at each of these eight sectors to see where we can tie in. We are named in several spots throughout the Climate Action Plan. Generally, where it comes in for us is providing educational opportunities for the community to learn about sustainability and climate action and help to promote the things that the Village are doing with that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jill now to talk about what I feel is probably our most significant accomplishment in the last two years, which is our climate action and sustainability programming.
Right, so we, as part of our public awareness of sustainability, we have for many years provided programs for adults and for youth. And we, in the past year and a half or so, we have tried to tie in and support the priorities set by the Village Sustainability Commission. And so we've held, in the past year and a half, we've held 31 programs for adults and a handful of programs for children. And these are all related to sustainable living and nature, biodiversity. We, an example of how we support the Village priorities, the Sustainability Commission's priorities, is the Bike Banter Series, where we worked, we collaborated with the Village Pedestrian and Bicycle Commission to host a series of bicycle safety educational sessions. And we had a zero-waste series that also was supporting the Village's focus on waste. And not on this slide, but really important, or big public awareness programs, was on Earth Day last year, we had a poster exhibit in the lobby here to inform the public about the Village's proposed disposable bag ordinance. And so that's one of the ways that we support the Village in getting the word out about the Village initiatives and priorities. Next slide, please. And then we also partner with the Village directly to put on some of our programs. For example, last year, we had a session called Solar Power Hour to inform people about how the opportunities for purchasing solar panels. We're doing that again this year, next month. So save the date, August 14th, if you're interested. And we also partner very much with the local group Go Green Northbrook, which is a community group, they do some of their own public awareness initiatives and tree plantings, and we work closely with them on many programs, especially on panel programs like this one you see on the slide on sustainable investing. And then we also, the Village, you may have noticed, across the street, there's this lovely demonstration vegetable garden. So we, the library does the registration for that, but we also offer complimentary lectures. We did this last year, a whole series on vegetable gardening to kind of complement the hands-on workshops that were taking place on that little hill. So those are some of the things that we've been working on.
We've also implemented litter-free supply stations. This is in partnership with the Friends of the Chicago River. Folks can come to the library and check out supplies to clean up the Chicago River, and that's all done through our Library of Things collection, so circulation is managing that. You may remember, we've talked about this a couple of months ago, we were beta testers for the Village's Green Business Checklist, which is being rolled out now in its full format, and we went through the beta list, we gave feedback, and we received a silver rating. So we have room to grow, but we're not doing too bad. We've participated in No Mo and then this year Slow Mo May to promote Pollinator Habitat. We also helped design the graphics for this, our graphic designer contributed to that. So those are, oh, I missed this one. We implemented zero-waste guidelines for programming. It is not realistic that we would have zero waste in all of our programs all of the time. Think craft programs, there's gonna be a little bit. But we wrote out both suggestions for reducing waste during programming and put together some procedures so that when we have events that involve food, we also have stations that staff can book to provide receptacles for landfill recycling and compost, and we use a commercial recycling company all the time for staff compost, and then we've added that for programming as well. So looking into the future, the Climate Action Plan is going strong at the Village, and so we do plan to continue to align our climate action initiatives with theirs. Some of the bigger things that we have coming up in the future are landscaping project, where we can look at having native plants, looking at reducing pesticide. Adjacent to this, the Village is looking at a leaf blower ordinance, where it would restrict the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, so we want to align with how that plays out. There's also a lot of talk about EV charging stations and solar panels, so all of those are conversations that we will definitely be a part of. And then, of course, we will continue with our amazing programming on sustainability and climate action. We will continue to partner with the Village to help them educate the public on the initiatives within the CAP. As you are very much aware, we're entering into a strategic planning process, which will involve a community-wide survey, and I think there's a lot of opportunity here to survey the community about what types of sustainability initiatives they want to see from the library and how they want to prioritize not only our sustainable programming, but also ensuring that our facility is as sustainable as possible. And our DEI work with Lily Zhang and our previous work with the Blackberry Collection are helping us to look at the climate in terms of climate justice. We know that being socially equitable is a pillar in the triple bottom line, and it is part of ALA's commitment to sustainability, and it's a really important piece in DEI work. The slide is just links to the images that were used in the presentation, in case anybody wants to go back and look at them. And then that wraps it up, so we just wanted to open it up to any questions or comments that you might have.
So you commented on the EV charging, and several years ago, I mean, many, many, many years ago, when it was still a very niche kind of idea, that was presented to the board, not by the staff, but by a member of the community, it had been a suggestion.
About 15 years now.
There was one when Carlos was president, I think, or was a former board member.
It was before I got here, I was, well, maybe like a decade.
Anyways, it was a while ago when it was niche. And, you know, now that you have much larger scale adoption of EVs, and we also are seeing car manufacturers moving to shifting their fleets from gas-powered to EVs, it seems like it's more appropriate for us to look at that again, especially if it's within conjunction with the Village and the possibility of it being on the street or somewhere near the library, but not just in the library's lot. I think that would be something I would encourage you to kind of focus on and move forward with, especially now that there are multiple vendors that are looking into selling them places.
I would think if we did it on the street, it would have to, that would have to be a Village initiative.
But it also would help us avoid losing spots that are specific to EVs.
Right, we couldn't, we've actually talked to them about putting them in a lot, and they're not keen on losing spots in our lot.
I agree with that. It must become a point where you have 50% or more adoption.
I always have something to say.
Thank you, it was really informative, and I was very proud that we are actually this involved and this committed, and we'll make a difference, and you explained it beautifully, and your commitment to it is really appreciated, so thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. And Jill?
Thanks, Jill, thanks, Kelly. Oh, right, my report stuff, sorry. It's really exciting, we have done a tremendous amount, it's pretty cool. So August 17th is our next board meeting, and I wanted to check in and see about doing a board picture. I know, it's, you know, so is everybody gonna be at the August board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, no? Okay, so we will shoot for September, perhaps. I have a couple other things I wanted to mention. I did put this in my report, but we have our next late open on Friday, August 4th, and Kelly has contracted with a great company to do some bystander intervention training. Given that we have had some more patrons coming to visit board meetings, I wanted to just open this up, if any board members are interested in attending, it's a virtual program, so you can attend from the comfort of wherever you are. And then we'll most likely be, well, Kelly's actually reached out to Rails, who will be offering probably a series of programs with this, but the goal is to offer staff more resources on conflict de-escalation and handling challenging situations. So if you're interested, just shoot Kelly or I an email, and we'll make sure that you get the links when we have them. And then I also wanted to mention that we are, Anna, well, Anna started the audit process back in May realistically, but the auditor was onsite this week reviewing things. They also, this year, Selden Fox, our auditor, sent the board a questionnaire. So they did send it, Jay's holding it up, evidence that you got it, great. So that is something that if you could each please fill it out. If you did not get it, let Anna know, and she'll make sure that you...
Was that the entire board?
Get a copy, it is the entire board, yep, not just the officers. Janet did not get it.
Yes.
Anna will make that happen. It is a riveting questionnaire to fill out, and if you have any questions on any of the pieces...
Maybe you didn't get it because you're new to the board and they're auditing, but I'll ask him.
Oh, maybe because you weren't on the board last year for the audit?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you have any questions, please, Anna, about that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that we found out just a couple days ago that Illinois Libraries Present won the Illinois Library Association Hugh C. Atkinson Inner Library Cooperation Award. So we're very excited about that. And we're just finishing up registration for season three, and we have, it looks like we'll have about 15 to 20 more libraries joining, so we're at about 225 or so, and have some really great people booked for season three. But we're very excited to have been nominated for and that they chose us for this. So there will be, the award ceremony will be at the annual conference in October. And I'm happy to answer any questions on anything else in my report.
I have one question, I was reading about how the summer reading's going, and it looks like it's going awesome.
It is.
And I was looking at the statistics, which would have a number, and then it would say percent finished. And I thought, how, what does that mean?
So in order to complete the reading program for adults, you have to read four books, and so that means they've finished, if you've read at least four, and then you've gotten a really nice insulated tote bag. Thank you for that, that's perfect promo. And then the, for the children, it is, for the baby club, there's a variety of activities that they have to complete, and if they complete a certain number, they get their free book, and that means they've finished. For kids, they have to read for, every five days is a level, and, oh, I should know, is it 20 or 25 days? I should remember this.
I believe it's 20.
20 days of reading, so rather than, you know, previously, there was, you know, back, 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 when I first started in libraries, it was like, how many books did you read? And then a lot of libraries did pages, and then minutes. And so the whole goal of the reading program is to establish a habit of reading. So we've switched to days and recommend, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, but kids can choose. And then for the teens, they are doing minutes, because they, we surveyed them, and that is what they still like. So they have to read a certain number of minutes. And then when they get their, when they finish that and get their free book, that means they've finished. So that is what that percentage means.
Because I thought, I knew it was still going on for another few weeks.
It is, so people have already finished. I know, eager people, it's great.
Other questions for Kate? Okay, thank you, Kate. Great, next item is board member reports. Are there any items any board members would like to report?
I just wanted to say that I attended chair yoga last Friday. And it was, it was great, and a full house.
It is very popular.
Clearly. I enjoyed it very much, and harder than you'd think for it being chair yoga. Right in here.
What else? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. First item is the strategic plan update. There's a planning committee set up with staff of Kate Hall, Kelly Durov, Sarah Chase in Youth Services, Lev Kromens in Adult Services, Erin Ashman in Events Production, and Linda Vearing in Marketing. They would like to know if there are one to two board members who would like to participate. And Janet, I have a note that you said you may be interested in participating?
I am, I have, I have two, one question, one comment. I looked at the, you know, different meetings, and I think a large part of it would depend on when these are held. I, you know, I'm a full-time, I wouldn't be available for anything that happened during a business day. So that is one thing. The comment is, my employer, the school district that I work for, is also launching a strategic planning process. I will be the main staff point person on that, which will mean I have, and they will be holding things on outside of work hours, you know, so I do not know at this time if anything would conflict. If it did, obviously, I would have to defer to my...
The paying job? That seems fair.
Those are my caveats and my questions.
So the, the planning team, which is what, you know, would be the one, with the one to two board members and the staff that Jay mentioned, will be meeting twice. Once, we actually have a date from the consultant, it is August 17th at 3:00 PM, which I know is during the day, so that would not work with that. But then for the other one, it would be set later this fall, and we do not have any dates set. The committee, or the strategic planning consultant, Fast Forward Libraries, there will be a board retreat where the entire board will meet and talk, and the consultant will share information. So I guess just to kind of let everyone on the board know that you will be involved in the process regardless of if you are on the planning, on the planning team. The planning team is really more focused on setting up the focus groups, designing the survey, making sure that all of the different voices in the community are reached out to, if you will. So, and we will have focus groups at times that work with the people, with the different audiences that we're seeking to engage with, so, both in person and online, so there'll be a combo of people.
Sorry, I am very interested, but I felt it was important that you realized that I would have other, might have...
Competing.
Competing interests, and I certainly want board members who can devote appropriate time to this process. So whether you feel like, I wish I knew, wish I could tell you what the schedule was for our own strategic plan. I cannot, we're just interviewing consultants right now.
Okay, so you're a couple months...
We are.
Away from, yeah.
I would be happy to work in conjunction with Janet, and we could, I could cover what you can, or we can tag team?
Unless you wanted two people who were available for everything.
I think that I am happy with any level of involvement. This is a great opportunity to get to work more closely with some of these staff. And I know that, you know, almost everyone here does have a full-time job, so I recognize how challenging that can be. I have one of those as well, so I get it. So I, you know, I mean, Janet, if you're willing, there's also gonna be just a subcommittee working on the survey, and if that would be of interest, that is a more defined, like, that's basically kind of over the next month. And there's nothing, there's, we don't have anyone... And there's nothing that, there's, we don't have anyone defined yet in that committee, in the subcommittee, but if that would be of interest, perhaps, and if, you know-
I would, I'd be happy to work on that. I do many surveys.
I know. So, and I don't know if anyone else is also interested. We want to limit it to two, because otherwise we invoke OMA and then have to have a separate committee and fund postings and all of that. So-
I'd be interested, but I don't want to take an opportunity away from someone else.
Okay. So I'm going to reach out to all three of you and get a more detailed breakdown of timeline stuff, so that you can look at that, Janet, and then, and then we'll talk. Thank you so much. And then, yes, once we have the kickoff, then we'll have more information.
Unless there's any more questions for Kate in the strategic plan, move on to the next items. We already had the Lilly Zhang project update. The-
I add a few more things, because I know-
On which part?
On the Lilly Zhang project update?
Sure.
Okay. So I did want to just kind of give a little bit more information to the board on the kickoff. So we did a few weeks ago do a kickoff with Lilly, and as you saw, you just received the results from that. One of the things that we're now working on with Lilly is finalizing the survey, and the responses from staff have really helped to inform that process. Once the survey is sent out to staff, which we anticipate that happening next week, then I don't, I can't remember how long Lilly said that the survey would be open, but then it'll take about four to six weeks for the analysis portion. So we're most likely looking at having some more information to share with the board at the September board meeting. Jamie was able to attend the last meeting with Lilly, so Jamie, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add with that.
Nothing really specific, just seems like the committee and everyone is working well and is excited to move forward.
Yeah, I agree. So, and I don't know if the board has any other thoughts from talking with Lilly, if there is anything else that you, I know you haven't had that much more time to process through the information that you received, but if there is anything that it would be helpful for me to share, or for Jamie to share back with Lilly, we're happy.
Well, I mean, one of the things that we focused on with Lilly was communication. More specifically, communication about the board's role and trying to get some information to the staff as of what the board has been doing to try and support the EDI efforts. So is that something that, there was specifics of what types of communication maybe made that the EDI committee is going to kind of come up with some ideas and then, you know, come back to us, or how's that going to-
So the working group that is working with Lilly is myself, Michelle Misalski, and Sarah Scotius. It's a smaller group. It's not the full EDI committee. The EDI committee has defined some projects that they're all working on right now, and I think as we heard from Lilly, we want to be careful not to add more to their plates until we've figured out a way to expand resources. So I think that, you know, from my perspective, having opportunities for the staff to interact with the board, obviously, if it's a full board, that has to be an open meeting, but perhaps there are other things, and maybe Jamie and I can brainstorm some ideas of things that we can do with Michelle and Sarah. I think they have a really good read on where staff are at, and can come up with some ideas of things that we could perhaps do to help with communication. Obviously, we want, as Barbara pointed out, you know, kind of help people know each other as individuals, which is challenging with a board, because you're a whole, but you're also individuals. So I think we can figure out some different ideas and see-
Yeah, I mean, I think those are two related, but not necessarily, you know, part components.
Okay.
Because I'm focused more on what do we do to show that we're supporting EDI, separate and apart from, what do we do to get the staff to know us a little bit better? Because I think that second part, there's a lot more we can do that doesn't involve EDI. But the first part, which seems to be a bit of a roadblock in maybe having a successful implementation of this whole EDI project, you know, I don't know if there's something that, you know, we need to communicate maybe in the next month on behalf of the board to just kind of show the support and address some of these staff issues, whether it's a special meeting to, just on a meeting, discuss EDI topics, and let staff come in and, you know, to present support or something of that nature? You know, that's something you want to think about for the agenda building?
Yeah, we can absolutely do something like that. I think also, you know, Lilly's point about kind of like addressing some of the staff issues, but then also moving forward. And, and I know that there will be staff that are comfortable coming and asking questions directly of the board, just as there will be staff that are not comfortable with that at all. So I think having a multi-pronged approach to things, and maybe it is something we can consider as simple as, you know, asking what questions the staff, you know, having just a list of questions and having a moderated discussion where I read the questions that staff have submitted, and the board has an opportunity to talk about them. And, you know, and then see. So I think whether that's at a regular meeting, we do it at a special meeting, certainly if there's, you know, one or two board members that wanted to come, our, our all-staff meetings are all on Zoom if that was of interest. I think, though, it is helpful to have it as the full board, because no individual board member has any, you know, has any authority to make decisions. You only have the decision-making power as a whole, so-
If you want to do the question and answer at the next meeting, that might be something that you can do.
Okay.
I think.
We can do that.
Yeah.
It could be something like, ask the board, where like-
Yeah.
Some of the questions and the board will answer.
Or every month when we meet, maybe there's a, something submitted and-
Oh, yeah. To think of a way to have them submit questions that doesn't go through you, though, given their belief that the board works under your authority. I can't think of a better way to phrase that.
Uh, yeah, no, that basically I'm the puppet master.
You're telling us what to do.
Yeah. No, I think that that is a fair concern, and I imagine that Lilly would be willing. I'm sure that Michelle and Sarah would also be willing. You know, we can fill out a Google form. We could also just, um, try to think if there are other, you're not thinking of something. I thought you were going to say something like, oh, I have an idea of something we could do. One of the challenges with the Google forms is there are some staff that-
Don't trust it. Yeah. He told us.
Yeah, that think that we can still tell. So I think, um-
Was there a manager that's in the small group that you mentioned?
Yeah, so we could, like, Michelle is the assistant manager for Maker Services. You know, Sarah Scotius is one of our tech services librarians. Both are excellent, and I think would be willing to monitor a Google form and take all of the questions and put them into, you know, a list that can be shared with the board. So, yeah. And I like, you know, Mara's idea of, it doesn't have to just be a one-and-done. This could be, like, we have a staff feedback form that I answer questions to in the all-staff emails, and, and it's just ongoing. So like, some weeks, there's nothing. Some weeks, there's a few, and people can just have that. So maybe having that as something, seeing how this goes, but being open, I think, to the opportunity to have that as something ongoing.
Sure. Now, there is one request, though, Kate.
Yes.
If it is going to be an ask-the-board that we're going to answer at the meeting?
Yeah.
If that can be included with the packet so that we can think through the answers and not just be put on the spot?
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Have the list of questions in the board packet. Yes. Great. We might be in for a really long meeting next time, Jay.
I don't have any questions.
We'll see how many questions we get. I'm excited to see what staff share.
I was thinking of like, you pick one question out of a hat.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I was thinking this was going to be like-
Okay.
I always thought of it being moderated, Kate would be the word.
Moderated, okay. Well, we'll see how many questions we get.
We do like three a week.
If we, if we need to break it up, yeah, we can at least, you know.
And you may find some are similar enough-
Correct. That you can, yeah.
We can set a timeline, Kate.
Absolutely. Jay, you're, you're the keeper of the clock, so whatever you say goes for a meeting length. Wonderful. Well, and Jamie and I'll still do some brainstorming, and we'll come back and see if there are more ideas, or, you know, obviously, there are staff that are watching now on the live stream. There'll be staff that watch the recording. So I guess just putting this out there, if anyone has suggestions, love to hear them. Feel free to reach out.
But I think at least Lilly's initial trust survey, like, bring this awareness to us that we need to start working on this. It's a good thing.
Yes.
It's a great thing.
Yep.
All right, question. Any more questions for Kate about the EDI? Hey, the next two items on the agenda, the salary schedule and the library's safety update will be in the closed session, so I'm going to move to the new business with the Book Sanctuary in Northbrook. So this is an item for discussion. Kate is going to kind of explain anything a little bit better than I do, but basically, we're being asked whether or not we, as a board, want to consider pushing both the library and the village board to consider making Northbrook a book sanctuary. Kate's going to explain a little bit more about what that would be, just to get an idea that it's something the board is interested in approaching the village board about. The idea being eventually to have the village board declare Northbrook a book sanctuary as a means of furthering kind of what has been done from the governor in terms of having banned, book banning, but to just go out and to say that we are pro, kind of open and free access to information.
Yeah.
Do you want to explain a little bit better, though, what the book sanctuary?
I'm happy to, although you did a great job. So essentially, there's a couple other libraries, both in Illinois and around the country, that have started doing this. And while the, you know, governor's signing of the House Bill 2789, it is, the restriction on it is that if we do not adopt the ALA Bill of Rights, which we've had adopted for like decades, so that is something we've already done, that we would not be eligible for grants. We receive about $45,000 a year in grants from the state, so it is not a sizable portion of our budget. However, a core library value is, of course, upholding intellectual freedom and pushing back against censorship. So we already are doing the things that make a book sanctuary. It just hasn't been declared. So essentially, we collect materials on a variety of different topics. We do not remove items because others deem them offensive or do not like their content. We make sure that people can access any of the information they are interested in learning about, and don't discriminate against what information people are seeking to obtain. It also means that we focus on promoting a wide variety of materials, talking about books that are banned, doing different displays, doing programming around it, all of which we already do. So we're doing all of the things. This would be merely a way of taking a firm stance on something that is core to libraries and inviting the village to do the same, and, and letting people in the community know, like, this is a place of learning. This is a place where we, as a community, engage in lifelong learning, and that means having access to a wide variety of information. So I wanted to see if the board would be interested in pursuing this. It will mean passing a resolution.
And just from your anecdotal kind of initial conversations, I thought you said you felt that the village board may be receptive.
I do. I mean, I've, I've not broached this with any of the village board members or anything, but certainly in previous conversations I've had with numerous members of the board, they are very much pro-library, pro-intellectual freedom. They believe in the people's rights to free information, and so I, I don't think this would be a hard sell. I think that this would be something that they would be excited to join, to, to join us in declaring.
I would be in favor of it. I would, and it doesn't sound like it would be. I don't want to put any additional work on the staff.
Yeah. We would do some marketing, and I've already talked to Linda if we went forward, and she's like, oh, we could do it around banned books week. I'm like, great. So, yes, this would not, this would simply be declaring, again, like I said, what's already being done.
When is banned book week?
It's in October.
Certainly in favor, but given that banned books week is in October, how, what's your, what, if, if, you know, if we all think we should move ahead on this?
Yeah. Next month, I'll bring a resolution to the board to look at, and if you adopt it. And then meanwhile, I'll also reach out to the village manager and village board, village president, and see if they're interested, and then, I can't imagine they won't be, and then we would go and, after the board adopts it, bring it to the village and hopefully have them adopted at one of their September meetings in time for us. I believe banned books week is the second or third week in October, so-
It says October 1st through 7th.
Oh, it's early.
Of February 23rd.
Okay, so October 1st through 7th. Thanks, Mara. So that would be the timeline.
That's according to the ALA.
ALA would know.
Funny, because it also says typically held during the last week of September.
Right. Never been in September that I can remember. Was it? Okay, so I've lost all sense of time. So it sounds like this would be of interest?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Great. Well, I will work on a resolution to bring to the board next month.
Okay. That brings us to the next item, which is closed session. Is there a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Illinois Statute 5 ILCS 122(c)(2) relating collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and 5 ILCS 122(c)(8) security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened, or a reasonable potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy.
A second.
Barbara, thank you for the second. Can we please get a roll call, Jennifer?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Lovinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, at 8:25, we're going into executive session. Okay, at 9:45, we're reopening the open for the main session. We just finished the closed session, talking about salary schedules. Is there a motion to approve the salary schedules presented to the board? Second.
So moved.
Thank you, Mara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Lovinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has passed. I'd just like to say that this is an item that I think has been important to staff and to the board in terms of the changes that are being implemented in the salary schedule. I think it does a lot to going towards bringing the equitable pay for the different classes and bands of our staff, so that individuals doing the same types of tasks are being paid equally. I think it also does a lot to bring our staff into line with the salaries that are in the marketplace, so that they know that they're getting paid appropriately. And I think it does a lot, hopefully, to tell the staff that we do value their time and energy and contributions.
I, I hope this serves as recognition of the staff and the ways that they contribute to the library and our larger community, and I think this is- And I think this is a good foundation for staff retention and recognition of the work they do.
I agree, and I, I support the pay equity, and so, we're happy to do this for the staff.
I also support the pay equity and am very grateful for the, the work that the staff puts in for our library and our, our community as a whole.
Our staff really is what makes the library what it is. And I think that's one reason I support pay equity and my other contribution.
I agree that the staff is what represents the values and the direction of the library, and we are grateful for everything you do to make this such a community highlight.
I agree with what everyone says. That I'm glad we're moving towards this direction, that, that the analysis and this is brought to us and that, obviously, we're in support of, of pay equity, and it's the right thing to do, and we are supported.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the agenda building. For the next meeting, we'll be talking about detailed statement of receipts and expenditures for the previous six months as part of the consent agenda, I presume. There'll be a strategic plan update, another update for the Lilly Zhang EDI project. And there will not be pictures of the August meeting book potentially at the September meeting. Before we adjourn, is there anything anyone else would like to ask for the agenda next month?
Just adding the questions for the board that we talked about.
Right.
Will be added as well.
Okay. Anything else? All right, next. At nine forty-eight, we'll adjourn.